Thank you so much. Well, welcome everyone. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency, or the Community Redevelopment Agency. If you could please mute your mic. Pat, thank you. Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CST meetings. I now call this regular City Council meeting to order on May 5, 2020, at 6:03 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Thornton?
As in?
Councilmember Marquez? Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here. Thank you so much, City Clerk. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Steve Cantania, interim City Attorney.
Did you get that? Yes, I did. I should be Marshall now. Marshall?
What's up, Mike, interim City Manager?
Okay.
Marshall Ironman, Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Michael Wolf, interim Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Man Yomacha, Community Development Director.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Abdul Ahmed, Fire Chief.
John Salisbury, Chief of Police.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially when speaking. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right at this meeting. Finally, I ask the speakers, bear in mind that comments are limited to two minutes for each speaker and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda and non-agenda items will be taken up at this time. So again, if you would like to speak on items on the agenda or items on non-the agenda, this is the time to speak. Unless you've already put in a speaker request to speak on the public hearing item, which I received, then you wouldn't speak right now. Okay, so any person wishing to address the mayor, which is myself, and City Council on any matter, either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings, must follow the teleconference procedures. And this means that you have sent the request to speak to the City Clerk, which is number one, and then number two, that you also click the raise hand button. So I already noticed that someone already clicked that. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. Members of the public will be limited to two minutes. And in order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during the public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during council closing comments. So if you have any comments and you'd like us to address, we'll go ahead and address those at the end. So just stay tuned to the whole meeting. All right, so as of tonight, I have one, two, three, four. Okay, so we got five speakers. We'll start with Daryl Tarro, followed by Carrie Then and Robert Then. Go ahead, Daryl Tarro.
All right. Good evening. Today, tomorrow, and for an indefinite number of days to follow, we face a terrifying crisis. It's natural to feel as if nothing like this has ever happened. And for many of us, that's probably true, but our community has been through hard times before. And in each case, our character has been tested. Things in life will not always run smoothly. Sometimes we will be rising towards the heights, then all will seem to reverse itself and start downward. The great fact to remember is that the trend of civilization itself is forever upward, that a line drawn through the middle of the peaks and the valleys of the centuries always has an upward trend. That's why I believe in hope. That's the story of our community. It's one of progress and enlightenment, however uneven and incomplete. The past isn't a perfect guide to the present or the future, but to know that we have come through immensely difficult passages before, and Lord knows, we have, can help arm us against this despair. It's that spirit is what's going to carry us through this. With every challenge comes the chance of renewal. It's that notion that adversity can give birth to hope despite all the evidence to the contrary, that something or better awaits us as long as we have the courage to keep reaching, to keep working, to keep fighting. During difficult times like this, what matters the most is we're all in the same boat. We all share a similar destiny. If we focus on what binds us together, if we remember our responsibility to ourselves, but also to our responsibilities and obligations to one another, we will not just only get through this together, but we will give the people in our community our reason to hope again. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker we have is Carrie Then, followed by Robert Then.
Hi. I wanted to thank the city for the mobile meals program and for helping a dear friend. She had a stroke several years ago and is disabled, and the food provided her on that day made her day, and it also encouraged me to donate to the program. So I'd like to thank the Mobile Meals Program for helping her out. Onto another subject, the WLC is coming up again before City Council, as well as the Planning Commission. And I'd like to remind the City Council member, well, the mayor, who actually voted for this project several years ago, and others that have spoken in support of it, that at that time, we had a development agreement that included a fire station, training workers, and others. And of course, that agreement has since been struck down. So I would appreciate it if you would take into consideration the breadth of this project, as well as the fact that the agreement no longer exists. Today, the county announced new COVID testing locations, and once again, the second largest city in Moreno Valley, the second largest city in the county, has no testing facility, yet we have 510 cases and 17 deaths. So today, I went online and I looked at the testing facilities. First of all, the one at Ryder Street in Paris would take me, is 13 miles from my house, and there is no transit option to get to that facility. So then I thought, well, what about one of my family members who lives on Willet Street? How long would it take her to get there? And there was a transit option, but it would take her one hour and 17 minutes. On Paris, at the Steel Peak Station, 20 miles from my house, no transit option. And if my family member that lives on Willet decided to take transit, it would take her eight hours and 27 minutes to get there. Norco Crestview, 27 miles from my house, no transit option, and no transit option from Willet Lane. Riverside Mission Boulevard, 16 miles from my house, no transit option, and one hour and 34 minutes from Willet Lane.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you. All right. Next speaker that we have is Liliana Silva. Oh, sorry, Robert Then. And then after Robert Then is Liliana Silva.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Time sure flies when you're having fun. Unfortunately, for the last couple of weeks, I would say a lot of us around here in Moreno Valley aren't having much fun. But it wasn't that long ago that, really, that we can think back to the beginning of this COVID-19 epidemic and pandemic, and think about the news broadcasts that we saw during spring break, with thousands of young people on the beach ignoring all the warnings from the scientists about social gathering. Now, whether they were arrogant or just selfish, I don't know. Arrogant in that they didn't think the virus would affect them. They're young, they're healthy. Yeah, not going to bother me, not my problem. Or they're just selfish, and they would rather spend a day or two in the sun and the fun, rather than thinking about all those who might be affected by their actions. Now, when I think of the WLC, and I think of global warming, and I look at the City Council, I'm sorry, I see those same arrogant and selfish faces. You are those faces. Global warming is a fact. Science has proved it. It's not, it's not something that's going to occur five, 10, 20. We are in the midst of it now, right now, every day. Ice caps are melting, sea levels are rising, stronger and more frequent storms, flooding, extended droughts.
Thank you, Mr. Then. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. We have also Sal Solano. Okay, seeing there's no Sal here, just double check, just to double make sure. Okay, I guess he didn't come into the meeting. All right. And then I don't see any other raised hands as well. Okay. We will now go to the consent calendar. These are considered to be routine and non- controversial items. All items listed under the consent calendar, sections A through B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial, and may be enacted by one motion. Anyone can ask to have these items discussed as well. Items that are removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the City Clerk. So at this time, I'd like to see first if there's any council members, let me put it on the gallery screen here, if there's any council members that would like to have any items discussed. Okay, let's see here. Can you not have it a shared screen for just a moment? That way I can see who, really quick here. Okay, seeing no raised hands. Okay. I'll entertain a motion, and we already took a public comments on the side of. So I entertain a motion by Council to approve a consent counter, a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
The second?
Okay, a second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. So that was Baca and Thornton. Okay, City Clerk, please call the roll call. City Clerk?
Councilmember Thornton?
I seconded the motion.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes. Thank you so much, City Clerk. Okay, consent calendar is passed. We now move to our hearing item that we have, which is the public hearing to adopt the annual action plan for fiscal year 2021, sorry, 2020, 21. And I'll have a report from our CFO slash Assistant City Manager, Marshall Ironman. So Marshall, if you could go ahead and give us a report. This is our, I believe, our third one, right?
It's one of many. So, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. This is the final step of an eight-month process. So beginning in October, the City Council started reviewing different components of the fiscal year 2021 Annual Action Plan, which allocates the funding of the federal grants that we receive, one being the community to develop, excuse me, Community Development Block Grant, which is about $2 million, the Home Investment Partnership Program, or home funds, which is about $600,000 for affordable housing, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is about $182,000 for addressing homelessness prevention and homeless outreach funds. So this is the, to mention, the last final public hearing. We went through the process with City Council. Last time, we had a couple of comments from individuals. We've addressed those and have not received any additional comments to date. With that, I won't walk through the entire report, but we do have similar funding that continues to provide essential public services to the community, whether it's dealing with the homeless, dealing with food, different school needs, really addressing kind of the training and different programs in the community, and this including even the MOVAN process. So that gives you kind of a quick update. If Council likes, I can walk through the different entities that are getting funded, but otherwise, it remains the same as the last public hearing in April. And with that, that concludes my report.
Yes, and you did walk through that before. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you so much, Mr. Ironman. Any council questions of staff, if you could, please press your, raise your hand button. We see none. Okay, now we'll go ahead and open the hearing. I now open the hearing, and we do have one public testimony, and we have Jessica Munoz from Voices for Children. Good evening, Jessica.
Good evening. Thank you so much, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to take this opportunity again to thank the city very briefly for your partnership and support of our court appointed special advocate program over the last few years, and to respectfully request that you follow the recommendations to include Voices for Children in your plan for continued funding. I did want to take just a couple of seconds to share with you why, more than ever, being able to assign court-appointed special advocate volunteers for children who've been removed from their homes due to abuse or neglect and who have entered foster care is so critical. These are children who, under any circumstances, experience isolation and find themselves often living with people that are new to them in unfamiliar homes and attending unfamiliar schools. What our volunteers offer is someone who becomes very familiar to them and provides them with a caring, consistent adult presence, but who is also a person that has a platform to share with social workers, their attorneys, and the court, any observations they may have, concerns they may have, or needs that they learn the child has that must be addressed. And during this unprecedented time with our social services partners trying to do the very best job that they can, having this additional set of eyes and ears, if you will, on the children who have experienced this trauma is critical. We anticipate, too, that when children return to school, the number of child abuse reports will also increase, as kids are once again spending time with adults outside their home, many of whom, like teachers, have an obligation to report this abuse. So is the only program in the county authorized to provide this service. We're really grateful to the city for your support in making sure that we can continue to make this valuable advocacy available for children in Moreno Valley. So thank you all so much, and thank you too to staff who take the time to review our proposals.
Great. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. Okay, if there's any council members that like to speak, please press your Request to Speak button or raise hand. Okay, and then, and I kind of like it the way we have it right now, because everybody has a picture, the council members, so that it's easy to find you guys that way. So I think I like this strategy. We're getting better at this in time. So I like that. Okay, so I see none, then I'm going to close the hearing, and I'll entertain a motion by Council to approve the staff's recommendations, numbers two and three. Okay, motion, Victoria Baca, you had a, yes?
I second it.
Oh, okay. So she made the motion, and then a second by Councilmember Marquez. So Baca and Marquez, and then we'll have City Clerk? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes. Thank you. And motion passes. Congratulations to those nonprofits that have been rewarded. I think you guys are going to do a lot of great work in our community. So I really do want to say thank you for everything that you do, and I know that we really care about you. So thank you. All right. So now we're going to go to our reports section, and we do have one report, and this is from Mayor Pro Tem Baca, and it's the Western Riverside Council of Governments. Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm going to go over the summary for the meeting on May the 4th, and it was also a Zoom meeting, so where all the agencies are complying with the governor's mandates. So what we discussed was all the 2020 Tump Zone five-year transportation improvement programs, which were approved by Moreno Valley as part of the central Tump Zone. A summary was provided, which mentioned the upcoming review and adoption of the proposed final SOCal plan scheduled for the Southern California Association of Governments, also known as SCAG, regional council meeting on Thursday, May the 7th. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Wow, it's a very brief, very fast meeting here. Well, I just wanted to say one, a few, we did a few things actually in the consent calendar, just to address in A5, you know, we approved the support for Assembly Bill A6, Assembly Bill 664, which will provide worker protections to first responders for COVID-19-related illness. So we do worker protections for our regular city workers, and this is just a letter of support, you know, supporting Assembly Bill 664 on that. So that's a really good thing. And then we also made agreements with our city employees. Like many of you know, many cities are actually coming across some financial issues. We're going to be having some financial difficulty this year, and then also next year, because there's barely any sales tax revenue coming in. And so because of that, we did make agreements and concessions with our staff, so that we can continue to have a balanced budget and continue to provide services to the residents of Moreno Valley. So I want to thank our staff for stepping up and really sacrificing, you know, sacrificing for all of this. This is really good, so that we didn't have to do layoffs or anything like that. So I want to thank our staff ahead of time. Okay, so now that leads us to City Attorney's Report. Sorry, go ahead, City Attorney. Since I already mentioned City Attorney, go ahead and.
Mute me. Oh, there I go. The only thing I have to announce is that the Riverside County Board of Supervisors meeting today, I'm not sure exactly what they did, because I'm here, but there's, there is going to be discussion about easing some of the restrictions that have been imposed by the county public health officer. I'm not clear as far as to how far they're going to go, but we'll probably find out tomorrow, if not later tonight, through the media. I understand that the governor is also going to be considering soon a four-stage plan to reopen the economy, and the first phase is going to start with considering allowing low-risk workplaces to open that are probably going to pertain to retail and manufacturing. And the second phase is going to include even more retail, manufacturing, recreation activities, and some religious activities. It's also my understanding the governor is considering reviewing the idea, or considering the idea of allowing some of the hospitality businesses to reopen, which is a source of, as everybody knows, of our transient occupancy tax revenue. And so that's also going to be considered by the governor. So I gather when these, everybody should just watch the news, and you'll get an idea of where we're all heading. And the only thing I'd like to point out is that the county, when the county adopts a mandatory rule, all the cities within the county have to comply with that rule. But if any of the rules are considered to be discretionary, it's up to the local municipality to decide whether or not they want to adopt the rule and make it mandatory, or adopt any rules that are a lot stricter or more strict than the county rules. So just wanted to add that.
Okay. Thank you so much, City Attorney. Appreciate it. Thank you. We have a City Manager's Report. Okay, we'll go ahead and unmute him. Oh, somebody muted him again. Okay, there you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mayor and I have two items. First is, I just want to congratulate the city. We approved a fantastic project this past week. This is our master plan for our Kaiser Hospital, which upon build-out is going to increase our footprint for millions of square feet of additional hospital usage in Moreno Valley. It's going to generate close to 4,000 new jobs, and it's going to be a fantastic amenity to our city. And we're very looking forward to the first phase of development. Hopefully, they'll start into this year, and by next year, we'll have some grand opening on the Kaiser project. And the second item is very, very important. I just want to, myself, the E-Team, and the rest of the employees, I really want to wish the mayor a happy birthday. His birthday is May 7, so I want to wish him a happy birthday. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mike. Appreciate that. Okay, and we'll have closing comments from Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to remind our residents about some of the programs that still are open, that I hope that you utilize. The very first one is our Employment Resource Center. It is still open. And also, if you go to their webpage, there is a coronavirus tab that has direct links to resources that you can utilize. So please, you can go there to apply for your unemployment benefits and to do some job search. Additionally, I want to thank my colleagues and the staff for our continuous support of Mobile Meals. It is something that is really helping our residents who are struggling with food insecurity. Today, as our interim City Attorney mentioned, the County Board of Supervisors is still discussing rescinding of the orders, and I just want to utilize my time just to talk about how, you know, it's, to me, it's very important for us to support freedom and liberty efforts. You know, the founders understood that the greatest threat to liberty is an all-powerful central government, where the few dictate to the many. And so it is very important, and from my perspective, that we exercise balance when it comes to future initiatives that restrict individual similarities. Additionally, as a social worker, I am deeply concerned about the mental health and well-being of our residents. Poverty is something that is directly linked to individuals experiencing not only mental illness, but also chronic illnesses. And suicide, trauma, abuse, and domestic violence will continue to rise. And I believe wholeheartedly that two to three years from now, when there will be data collected, that there will be more deaths associated to these efforts than COVID-19. And so I think that it's something that we need to make sure that we're keeping in the forefront when we talk about continuing to close down our economy. Poverty is going to be something that is going to cause an enormous impact, not only on our city government and the resources that we have, but on our residents. And I think that there needs to be collective effort and regional support to address our vulnerable populations around this. Lastly, County Treasurer, John Christensen, made some comments during the county board of supervisors meeting. He's the tax collector for Riverside County, and he made a passionate charge to talk about the negative impacts that is occurring to our tax base, right? So that tax base is what supports our services, property taxes, the transient occupancy tax, sales tax. Those are things that fund our homeless efforts, public safety, animal shelter, code enforcement. These are emails that we receive every day from our residents. And so I just want, you know, I know that it's split 50/50. Some people feel like we continue to need to have the stay-at-home order, businesses continue to be shut down, but please know that that's impacting our economy, which will impact the services and programs that we can provide to you as our residents. So when you're complaining about wanting continuous investment into our road infrastructure, know that the longer our economy shut down, the less that that is going to happen. I really believe that you, please, everyone that's emailing us needs to also be writing our state legislators, State Assembly Jose Medina, and our state Senator Richard Robb, because the governor has really handcuffed us in a sense where we, you know, we can't loosen up policies that have been established by the state and with executive orders. And so it needs to be an effort of all of our residents, really making sure that we are not only lobbying City Council members, but our county board of supervisor, Jeff Hewitt, and other legislators, and letting them know how you feel about the future of our state and our local economy. So thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dr. Thornton. And I like that you mentioned that the stay-at-home orders actually come from the governor. And so if you, if there's any concerns about that, you know, you have to write to the governor's office, to your assembly members, your senate, that's very, very important as well, and then your county, the county board of supervisors, who has that order on this area. So thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so we have Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you, a big thank you to our staff for what they're doing right now. It's not an easy job. I just, I want to thank them. I also want to thank the employees' union for working with the council on their agreement. Like the mayor had said, prevents us from laying off any employees, and that's the last thing I want to say. I want to say thank you to the employees. I wanted to say thank you to the employees. Also, I wanna say thank you for the nonprofit groups that are out there distributing the food to the people in desperate need. So thank you, nonprofit groups, continue to work. And if there's anything that I can do personally, be free to call me. Next is the, I'm asking, begging the residents of Moreno Valley, please, wherever you go in public, wear your mask. Use the distance that's required, six feet, maybe 10 feet, please. Do that, so we can get over, over this, this virus, so it won't be spreading anymore. I've been out lately, and I've seen people out and walking the streets. That's fine, if nobody's around you, I understand not wearing a mask. But when you're in a group of people that you meet out there, wear your mask, please. So let's get over this, so we can get back to, to normal operations out here. Small businesses, I, I don't know much more I can tell you. The mayor had said it, all this comes from, from the state. It doesn't come from our city. It doesn't come from the mayor, it doesn't come from our city council members. All these orders are done by the governor. So I, I do get calls, I do get emails, asking me, well, you know, we need to open up this. I understand that, and I feel for the small businesses. And I hope that this latest phase that we're going through will allow that to happen for the small businesses to open up, so we can get back to some type of enormity out here. And again, please, residents of Moreno Valley, just bear with us, we'll all get through this together. And again, happy mayor, a happy birthday, Mayor, and everybody stay safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, appreciate it. Alright, we have. I always do this all the time, but I forget the order. Okay, Councilmember Carrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to everyone, and first, I wanna just mention that May 1st was International Workers' Day. So I do want to just give a big shout-out and a huge thank you to all of, all employees across, you know, all industries, first responders, healthcare personnel, grocery store workers, and everyone else who has provided the essential services to keep everything running and to keep the gears moving. So I do wanna recognize all employees from our city staff, all the way across our country, for the work that you're continually doing. So thank you all for that. Next, I wanna talk about the, a program through the Riverside Workforce Development Division. They received additional funding from the state of California, and they're offering up to $800 in job loss benefits. So there are certain qualifications and requirements to obtain that money. But you can actually call, it's 951-955-9742, to see if you qualify to receive that funding. Once again, that phone number is 951-955-9742, and that's through the Riverside Workforce Development Division. So please, you know, call them and see if you qualify, and hopefully you do, so you can get some of that additional funding. Also, to any essential workers who may be in need of childcare, the state also created a portal and an interactive map to find safe and reliable childcare options. And you can find that by going to childcare.ca.gov. Once again, that's childcare.ca.gov. You can go to that website, and if you're in need, and maybe you don't know where to find them, or, you know, you need help finding childcare options, you can go to that website and, and get some assistance there. I also want to recognize local church here, Sandals Moreno Valley. Tomorrow, they are conducting recognition, a moment of recognition for our healthcare workers over at Kaiser, and the city manager mentioned the expansion over at Kaiser as well. So I, I just wanna thank Sandals for reaching out, and I do wanna invite my colleagues as well. You know, they, they extend the invitation to you, and they would love to have you in attendance. It's gonna be at 7:00 PM at Kaiser on Iris over in District 4. And they're actually making care packages for the employees at the hospital. And this is, this is the one that really got me. They're making care packages for new, for parents of newborn babies, of newborn children. So for the fathers and the mothers, they're making care packages for them, so I think that's a really nice touch. And so we'll be out there tomorrow at 7:00 PM at Kaiser. You know, just transitioning over to the economy, we've seen a lot of, a lot of repercussions of what happened. One of which is the realization and a lot of shortfalls that our system has. For example, the supply chain, and how reliant our country is on, on foreign countries for raw goods and finished goods. And that's one thing that I think a lot of people in, in the industry and business owners and corporations are trying to figure out, that how do we shift this? And how do we produce and manufacture more things here at home? And I think that that's an opportunity for us as a city to capitalize on, using things like 3D printing and additive manufacturing, and a lot of these new technologies like laser cutters. And, you know, we have, we have those facilities here in the city, so I think we just need to keep expanding on that. Also, the healthcare and hospitals, you know, we, we've seen more than ever with this pandemic how vital it is to have access to healthcare and pharmaceuticals and everything. So I think with our two hospitals, it's a, we're heading in the right direction, and we have a big opportunity to do more. So I, I, I do want to also wish a happy early birthday to Mayor Gutierrez. I know, I know how it is, because my birthday was a few weeks ago, being in quarantine, but I know we'll be able to celebrate with our families very soon, so happy early birthday to you. And just one final request, you know, graduations are coming soon, and a lot of high school, most high school students and college students aren't, they don't have the opportunity to go to a physical graduation. So, you know, I think a, a small gesture of appreciation would be to light the M for all of our high school graduates, as well as our university and college graduates next month. So with that, I wanna wish everyone a good evening and stay well. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Councilmember, appreciate it. And we have Mayor Pro Tembaca. Go ahead.
Okay, alright, thank you so much. I just wanna say thank you to Dr. Thornton and Councilwoman Carrera for your comments. I'm not gonna repeat them, because I, I agree with everything you had. So I'm just crossing everything off my list, because you already said it. But I wanna say that we're going to have the M lit up in green on Friday for Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know that it's very difficult. I work in the education industry, and it's very difficult with all the schools closed. I can't imagine what the teachers are going through when they don't have access to their classrooms, and they have to change their whole teaching experience into Zoom, Google Classrooms, and Chromebooks, and what have you. And a lot of the, of the newspapers are reporting that a lot of our kids are not checking in, so. Appreciate all the teachers and appreciate everything, every single thing you're doing to keep our kids educated and learning. And for our public service employees, for the week, we have the M, and it's gonna be lit blue tomorrow, May 6th. And I just wanna say thank you to everyone that's out there. We have fire and police and our medical people out there, taking care of so much and risking themselves by being contaminated. You really don't know who has the virus. Some people don't have any symptoms at all, and they can be infected, and they can infect you. So everyone that is going out into the community, I know you gotta go shopping, I know you gotta go to the doctor. Whatever you're doing out there, please be safe, be cautious, and follow all the indications that are given to us to keep us safe, like wearing masks. You have to wear masks. And if you're not sure, if you should, just wear it. And if you don't have any, you know, reach out, and we'll, we'll make sure that that happens, and that you get that. Another program that I wanna mention is the Movil Meals. This is such a great, great idea. I mean, I'm just so overwhelmed with it, because we have so many people that are being fed every week. They get these packages with food that lasts the whole week. And we have that for our seniors and for persons that have some type of disability and are using this food to get by. So I just wanna say that I'm very proud of that program, and I wanna thank everyone that's taking advantage of it, because it's, there's no shame in that. You need to let us know what's going on, because that's why we're here. We're here to make sure that you're safe and healthy. And eventually, when we open up, we'll be able to use the trails or our bike lanes and, you know, get back into, to the groove of things. We have to, we have a governor who's starting to ease some things. I don't know how it's gonna happen, but I believe that if we do this slowly in increments, that we'll probably be better off than just opening it all up and people just go back to the, to the old habits. We have the Salvation Army here in Moreno Valley, who does a lot of good with the homeless, people that are down and out, people that need food, that need services. So please take advantage of the Salvation Army, because they have a lot of programs. They have a nice building off of Graham and Alessandro. And they receive funds from the city, and they will help you in any situation. And if they can't help you themselves, they will refer you to another agency. I, I wanna ask the mayor what we're gonna do for the, you could answer me later, whenever you can. I'm concerned about the cooling centers for our seniors. How, are we gonna look into that?
We, yes, we have a plan.
Okay, alright, good. Okay, and I just wanna close by saying happy birthday to the best mayor. Not, not only in the state, but I think in the whole nation.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tembaca, I really appreciate it. And yeah, in talking about the cooling center, I know that the county health department, last week, they actually loosened up a restriction of the golf courses. And so as a city, we operate a city golf course, and so we're gonna have that center available as a cooling center. And then we're looking at other areas as well, like for example, our senior center, which we've had in the past as well, and things like that. However, I wanna remind everyone that if you have access to air conditioning, please turn it on. Please turn it on at this time, because it's better that not too many people show up at these, at these, I mean, if you have to, then, then of course, you know, we don't want you to have, you know, any heat issues or anything like that. But if you do have access to an air conditioner, please turn that on. That will be the first step. And then if you don't, you can go to either our senior center or to the golf course center. We do have those cooling centers, because, you know, a lot of things are closed. You know, the malls closed, a lot of the other facilities as well. So we do still gotta practice, though, social distancing. It's very, very, very important. Yes, the ICU rates have actually gone down, and I've been monitoring it very, very closely. But we wanna make sure that there's no other spikes. So just keep, like Councilmember Marquez had mentioned, you know, the six feet, maybe 10 feet. Keep that apart. Wear your mask, even if it's not required. You know, I don't know what's gonna happen at the county level, but I'm gonna still wear my mask, you know, as a mayor, just even when I go out, because, you know, I just wanna protect others, and I wanna protect myself as well. So keep that in mind. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tembaca, for the sharing the, the dates for the lighting the M. You know, the lighting the M is so important to me, because it really brings culture, culture into our, into our city, and it's part of Moreno Valley. That M Mountain has been with us, and it, every time I see that M Mountain, it just reminds me of home, every time, so when I see that M Mountain. So I'm very happy that as a city, we will be recognizing our public service workers. That's very important. And I think I, I don't know if we have different dates, but if it's on May 8th, on Friday or not, but, you know, if you see those colors, it's because of the public service workers that we have. The green color will be for the teacher's appreciation, because this week, every year, school districts, the community, they carve out a whole week for just teachers. And in the past, you know, I mean, I've been a teacher, and in the past, we used to have churches coming to the school and cook for us. I mean, it was really, really nice. And I know that the teachers aren't getting that right now. So it's kinda nice to, to recognize them for all their hard work and, you know, and everything that they're going through as well. I also wanna wish a Happy Mother's Day. Happy Mother's Day this Sunday. Feliz Dia de las Madres. I wanna wish all the mothers as well for Happy Mother's Day, and I'm really looking forward to that for you. I know this is kind of a very different circumstance, you know, that we'll be celebrating it, but as I think like many people, like Councilmember Carrera said, with his birthday, my birthday, it's gonna be really interesting. I wanna thank the staff, especially the E-team, for their leadership and working with our unions or associations, and coming to these concessions. You know, I know it wasn't easy, but it was important to come to these concessions and, and certain furloughs that we agreed to, because, you know, we, we didn't wanna lay anyone off, and we don't wanna lay anyone off. And so we, but we wanna make sure that we don't cut services to residents. You know, that's a very big thing, public safety and services, you know, shouldn't be cut. And so that's something that was really important to me, and I know that the staff did a great job in that. And so we were able to save money there. Last week, I convened a disaster council meeting, and so this is separate from the regular city council meeting, and this includes me as a chairperson, the city manager as a director of emergency services, and then also the fire chief, Ahmad Abdul. He's the Assistant Director of Emergency Services. So according to our ordinances, we just had a meeting just to kinda talk about what was going on, you know, with the whole coronavirus thing, and also, you know, with some of the restrictions kinda being eased by the governor, and then depending on what happens with the county as well, and coming up with different types of, of ideas there as well, of what would happen. I do wanna share with the residents that I'm going to be having a virtual Q and A on Facebook. So it's a virtual Q and A on Zoom as well, on Facebook at 4:00 PM tomorrow. And this is just an opportunity for me to share with, with the, with the city, citywide residents, just any updates that are kinda happening right now, you know, in our city related to the coronavirus, and also what we have done as a city. I wanna make it very clear, you know, all of the programs that we've implemented, from Movil Meals to other various programs, and just what we're doing and what we're going to be doing, because there's gonna be a lot of innovative programs coming out very, very soon for small businesses to help small businesses and those things. I don't wanna give it away yet, because we're still trying to fine-tune a lot of different things, but there's gonna be a lot of good things to help the small businesses and, and the residents. So I, I'm gonna be sharing those things at the virtual Q and A as well. And, you know, it's just been very difficult for many residents. I just wanna say this, because I've heard this from a lot of people as far as unemployment, you know, getting access to the EDD office, getting access and approved for the Triple P program for the small businesses. That's been very difficult. But I think that if you reach out to our office, you know, 951-413-3008, we can try to work with you and try to connect you to some of the representatives that can maybe help you. So like, for example, Assembly Member Medina's office has been very helpful in helping residents with the unemployment issue. So those things, so just reach out to us, no matter what, to any of the council members, and we will try to connect you to the right person, because it is frustrating. It is frustrating. I've heard this from many people, that they've been on the phone for hours, and, and I understand that concern. So at this time, I do want to thank everyone for coming and joining us at this council meeting. I do appreciate everything, and thank you for the birthday wishes. I really appreciate that, too. And again, Happy Mother's Day to the mothers out there that are gonna be celebrating on Sunday. And we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 6:51 PM. Alright, have a good night, guys.